For Kevin and we'll make sure we get it to the organizer of that. And finally, the county is having a stigma-free campaign. So you're gonna see, we're just rolling this out and you might see some stickers in storefronts throughout Somerville, throughout the county for stigma-free, you know, ending stigmas, ending, you know, to make sure that we treat each other with respect. And, you know, it's often overlooked, but we really have to remember that, you know, we can have disagreements in our community, you know, we can, or even here at this table, we can have disagreements, but at the end of the day, we must respect each other and love each other and make sure that we treat each other with respect, because sometimes it's difficult in day-to-day life. And that is all I have.
Mr. President.
Lord, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming. I'd like to update everyone on the progress with our five new police officers. Their training is almost complete and they're doing a fantastic job. Soon they will be assigned to ships and will be on their own. The views by their field training officers, as well as their supervisors, have been very positive. Communication and problem solving has been stressed and reinforced by everyone involved in their training. Once they are on their own, they will implement two officers assigned to community policing. Those officers, Nicole Giviasi and Ryan Miller, are excited and ready to go.
Thank you. Mr. Brady mentioned intersections. DOT out of Trenton is starting a survey on the work proposed for the Main Street car or between Bridge Street and Grove Street. Kevin, do we have that survey information posted yet on the website?
I'll have to check.
Okay, I believe it starts tomorrow.
Oh, the public information. Yeah, that starts tomorrow. That information is posted.
I would encourage the public to chime in. We had a presentation a while ago from the state DOT talking about restriping, blocking, and more importantly, any traffic signal, some improvements not only to Bridge Street intersection, but to Warren Street and also Grove Street. The project is not scheduled till 2025, Kevin, I believe?
Construction schedule.
I'm gonna try and maybe expedite that a little bit. They want information now, but a lot could change between now and construction time. So I would encourage the public to chime in. We'll have it on the website. I believe Tapping also covered the story, so you can get the link there and let the DOT know what you think. It's a major, you know, major intersection. It's only gonna get more active with some of the projects that are ongoing right now. And we have a chance to improve it, to make it safer for everybody, cyclists, pedestrians, and drivers as well. Kevin, I wanted to get an update on the shot clinic that we were trying to coordinate with Somerset County using one of our firehouses. Where do you stand with that?
Currently, we're still trying to do it at Lincoln Hose. The dates they were selected for Lincoln Hose did not fit Lincoln Hose's definition. So we may have to pivot and use a firehouse that we have control over. There was also a thought of actually doing the drive-through one by Saturday. So we'll know within this, well, we'll know actually this week if we match the dates.
As soon as you get that posted on our media sources, then it's gonna specifically be geared to youth, I believe.
Yeah, the school's gonna allow us to send out messaging through their school system. So it'll be geared to the school.
I mean, it seems like with international events right now, COVID is just thinking, you know, maybe a page two, but it's still with us and we wanna make sure as many of our kids are protected as possible and we'll make it as easy as possible, you know, for you to catch your child in a queue. Last thing I have, talking about March 4th, as well as the challenge day at the middle school. Ben, your school will be bringing back the traditional read-a-thon for Dr. Seuss. We missed it, you know, the last couple of years. I've been invited as well. I believe the rest of the council's been invited, if your schedules allow it. There's nothing more fun than reading to small kids. And for the public, let's not just read on Dr. Seuss Day. Let's read to our kids and our grandkids every day. It's the key. And, you know, read to your infant, and then read to your toddler, and then your toddler will start reading back to you. It's the best feeling in the world. Dr. Seuss Day is the 4th, but Reading Day in Somerville should be every day. And that's all I have. So Kevin, we have a series of CDBG applications. Are they required to present, or do you just read them and we...
I'll let you know what they are.
All right, so our first one is...
Safe and Sound, so that's...
Do you want to tap them first? Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. So the senior center isn't, is not submitting. The Zufall may be coming in at the next meeting to discuss their application. They do have, we do have one more council...
Is there a deadline or not?
There is. They could, they could, they could attend on March 7th.
Because last year, I know somebody missed the deadline.
Yep. So I reached out to everybody this year to remind them of the deadline. Safe and Sound Somerset, their project is a domestic violence housing service project. They're looking for, through the CDBG program, $25,000. It's to support survivors of domestic violence in obtaining and maintaining safe and sustainable housing. It's, obviously, the service that's provided is eligible. Their entire project is $162,000. They're only seeking $25,000 through CDBG. The second one, Borough Hall, is we're submitting a project which we submitted last year. It was predominantly the South Side of the municipality. It's eligible because of the content. It would be handicap ramps replacing either deteriorated ramps or curved intersections. So our application is for $100,000. We were successful last year on a very similar application at $100,000. Those will be various areas throughout the municipality. Last year, it was structured, and the majority of them were in the South Side area. The YNCA project, it's food security project at Somerville YNCA. They, they're, they're programmed as a food program, serving disadvantaged members of the community. They are looking for, they'll be seeking $15,000 to support staff needs. And again, what their program does, provides meals to some of those students during breaks, provides bomb bag lunches to the clients of ship, and also provides, also supports the food pantry. So those are the three we have this evening. If there's any objections to them, please let me know. I'll come back to, I'll go back to the applicants and chat.
Do we need a public hearing on them?
We could open up a public hearing, but it's the certain...
Not required?
It's not required. It just needs to be discussed at a public meeting.
And then you have to attest...
Well, you'll be signing a document saying we discuss it at a public meeting.
That's open to public. Never mind.
Sure. Councilmembers Granville Brady...
I, I, I move...
Oh, sorry. My apologies. I need seconds to the motion. Thank you. Councilmembers Granville Brady, Tom Mitchell, Fred Weed, Randy Pitts.
Public hearing on the CDBG applications is listed. Would anyone care to comment? Hearing none, motion closed.
Councilmembers Granville Brady...
Yes.
Tom Mitchell... Fred Weed...
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, so you have that for me later on. Okay, good. Next item on our agenda is a presentation from DGM Properties, respective project at 50 James Street and Kirby Avenue. Oh, I'm sorry, we wanted to do the budget first. Okay. We need a motion to open a public hearing for the DSA budget.
That's correct.
Go move. Second.
Councilmembers Granville Brady...
Yes.
Tom Mitchell... Fred Weed...
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
The, as you recall, the DSA had presented their budget during the introduction. The process is a little convoluted, so they've had their, they've had their presentation and, you know, if there's any questions, myself or the councilman can answer.
Public hearing is open on DSA. I did have a question. Any changes to their budget that was presented to us?
There were not. So now, this is a little, the DSA budget's a little different than the municipal budget. But the municipal budget allows us to move money around in November and December. Their budget immediately allows us to move money around. So that, you know, you're really looking, when it comes to the DSA budget, you're looking at its total number more than you're looking at the items, to be honest with you. The total number is $864,880. There were no changes presented after now we've made our presentation.
Okay. Any further comment on the DSA budget? Hearing none, motion closed.
Councilmembers Granville Brady...
Yes.
Tom Mitchell... Fred Weed... Randy Pitts?
Yes.
We don't have to vote on that since we already...
Well, there's a resolution...
There's a resolution later, okay. Now we have our discussion of 50 James Street. That's the person supposed to come up, identify themselves for the record and set up the easel so that, I guess the camera can bring it up maybe, maybe in this corner? Kevin, is that right?
I could adjust the camera wherever it is.
Who has the public to be able to see as well? Maybe by the door? Then we can move over. Those of us on this side can just move on over to that side. Back a little bit at an angle, so people in the corner can see as well.
No, I don't have to.
Good.
I don't have to fly down.
You got to keep going.
Go to the block.
Right.
Hi.
Anyone else? Anyone anything else? Good evening.
Is that you okay for the people in the corner? Everyone's good? Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. First, I'd like to thank the mayor and council for allowing us to present our latest project, as well as Colin Driver for facilitating the meeting.
Name and address for the record.
Greg Storms, DGM Management. I would like to first introduce a couple of people in the audience. My dad, Don, who's been developing properties since 1970 in Somerville. My son, Ryan, who's also a managing member of DGM Management. And Alyssa, who is our leasing and marketing director for Station House. Our latest project we're proposing is at 50 James Street. It consists of 112 residential apartments. Basically, the similar style to Station House, if you're all familiar with Station House. A four-story slab-on-grade apartment building with parking in the rear. We designed the project for the entrance on Fairview Avenue and coming off and doing all the parking in the rear to try to facilitate the residential feel and keep the residential feel to Fairview Avenue. The project is gonna have approximately 50% one-bedroom and 50% two-bedroom apartments, approximately. The final decision hasn't been made yet, but where the conceptual plans are about 50%, 50% one-bedroom, 50% two-bedroom. Each, the two-bedroom thing, at least 1,200 square feet, and one-bedrooms at least 850 square feet with dens, potentially even bigger. From our marketing, from the COVID outbreak and from the marketing we've done at Station House, we feel that the people are looking for bigger spaces, more space. Our two-bedroom units at Station House have rented, were sold out on our two-bedroom units probably way before our one-bedrooms, one-bedroom units. So that's what we're currently looking to do on this project. I can show you the conceptual plan of the building. As you can see, we tried to keep a residential feel to the building. This tower here fronts on Fairview Avenue and the building wraps around similar to Station House project where we have a drop-off area and around the front of the building and all the parking is in the rear to try to hide the cars and the parking. All the, all the units will have balconies, as well as a comprehensive amenity space. On the fourth floor, fourth floor of the east building, we plan on putting a exterior sun deck on the fourth floor as another part of our amenities space. Pretty much, this is our project that we're looking to do at 50 James Street. We also are thinking about using the name of the foundry, like the mayor suggested. It was an old foundry building. Many, at the turn of the century, they made cast iron pipe. And so we are, we're thinking of using the name, the foundry.
The purpose of this meeting is not to get into the details of the plans, the architecture. Basically, the developers requesting from us a designation so that they can proceed. And that's pretty much standard operation. Someone can't just move into town and start building something. They have to first be designated. They have to then submit professional plans, drawings, go to the planning board, get a site plan, and then go through that. Without getting into great details, are there any environmental challenges that you'll have to meet on this site?
A lot of the environmental remediation has been completed. We are doing our due diligence on it right now, and we don't foresee having a lot of environmental challenges. There has been extensive environmental remediation done on the project today.
Mostly on the rear end, because what's in front has basically been empty for a while. I don't, I don't know if there was anything on Fairview side. Maybe there was at some, at some distant point. It's been an empty field for, you know, a long time, but the truck operation in the back has been continuous. And I assume that most of the, most of the DEP interest would be on that back side.
Correct, yes. But there has been some work done on the project, and we are continuing doing our due diligence with the LSRP to remediate the project. That will be completed before any construction or anything starts.
And you would need a sign off from DEP?
Absolutely.
No further action before you could proceed?
No further action letter would definitely be needed, absolutely.
Greg, what is the access egress on that complex?
So the access and egress is going to be on Fairview Avenue. We are trying to see if we can get an emergency access for emergency vehicles coming off of James Street. Emergency access either through James Street, but the egress will be off of, off of Fairview Avenue.
So you won't conflict with Park View?
We will not conflict with Park View. We're trying to keep it, keep it separate, a separate project, and try to distinguish ourselves different. I think the flow of traffic will be better, rather than having, I would say 50% of people come off of James Street, and I forget the street down the east end that...
Haynes.
Haynes, just come off of Haynes. So we think the access here would be, would be, would be better.
How far down on James Street, on Fairview, do you plan to go from James Street to what?
Well, the, the property goes, I forget the exact dimensions of the property, but what do you mean, from how far down?
Yeah, you're going to Lozier? You're going all the way to Lozier?
No, no, no. The property is, I don't know the exact dimensions.
It's an existing property.
It's an existing property, yeah.
But you're leaving two, two residential lots between you and Lozier, correct?
Yes, two or three, I believe, yes.
Okay. Have you completed the property acquisition yet?
We are under contract for this property right now, yes. We are under contract.
What would the rent prices be for the units?
We haven't determined the rent prices yet, but I would say they would be similar to Park View and/or similar to Station House. We're gonna be trying to get a little larger units. We think that that's a more desirable apartment, a little, like I said, 850, 900 square feet for a one-bedroom and 1,250 to 1,300 for a two-bedroom.
No three-bedrooms?
No three-bedrooms, no. And we don't plan on having any studio apartments at the moment.
That's in the redevelopment area, I believe.
Yes, it is.
If I may, may I just...
And would that affect, I don't know who can answer this, would that affect rent prices in the surrounding community?
I'm gonna have a shot at that if I may. What the property do is increase the, the property values in the area more than the rent prices. I don't think the...
Because there are a lot of people who rely on those properties.
Yeah, I don't think it'll have that impact. What it'll do is make the landlords a lot happier because their property values go up. But the other part, too, in designating developers at this early point is it allows them to enter into an agreement, what we call an ESCO agreement, with the borough. So the borough professionals can help them work through the redevelopment plan, work through the very zoning aspects, the safety aspects, as they're preparing to go to the planning board. So typically, what has happened in the past is that by the time you get to the planning board, it's a one meeting and done, because all the wrinkles have been taken out of it prior to fronting the planning board.
Hey, any comments from council? I'd just like to say, going back 40 years, this neighborhood had the, had the inspection station there. Non-residential use. It had the old warehouse where Lico was, non-residential use. The zoning board, in its infinite wisdom, about a year ago, turned down a water motor repair business just west of your property, non-residential business. It's been my, my hoping dream to have residential property all the way from Gaston to Addusel Road. And I, I'm excited to see, you know, what, what this looks like as it goes through the process. Kevin, we can move that resolution of designation up, right?
On your agenda.
On your agenda, yeah.
So can we, can I get a motion to move that on? Circle. All right, roll call.
Councilmembers Granville Brady...
Yes.
Tom Mitchell...
Yeah.
Fred Weed...
To move forward, yes.
You're voting on the resolution?
Yeah.
Okay. You know, you're voting yes on the resolution.
To move forward on this particular resolution this time?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
But that does not mean my vote is solidified in future.
Never done.
Councilman Pitts?
Thank you. All right, so next step will be to work with our professionals, set up the ESCO, and there'll be many, many public hearings on this project.
Absolutely. We look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council.
All right, we have one ordinance for introduction tonight. Amendment chapter 150 entitled Sidewalk, section 34 of the Borough Code, entitled violations and penalties, establishing a fixed line for the owner or tenant of land in front of the sidewalk of any street, $100 for failing to remove snow or ice on such sidewalk. Motion for introduction. Somerville. Kevin, this is an amendment to an existing...
Yeah, the ordinance already exists. It's just a lot of people pay the fine through mail and not through...
Councilmembers Granville Brady...
Yes.
Tom Mitchell... Fred Weed...
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Kevin, when will this be on for adoption? Because we're gonna be short of data because of the calendar.
I think March 24th. Personally, first.
All right, we have two ordinances for public hearing and adoption. We'll take them separately with a public hearing on each one. Amendment chapter 80 entitled Fire Prevention, Life Safety, Section E Fire Watch, adding section E1, Schedule of Equipment Rates for Fire Watch. Need a motion to open a public hearing. Go move. Second.
Councilmembers Granville Brady...
Yes.
Tom Mitchell... Fred Weed...
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
All right. Public hearing on this ordinance. If any comments, questions, suggestions, to myself. Hearing none, motion to close public. Go move.
Councilmembers Granville Brady...
Yes.
Tom Mitchell... Fred Weed...
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Motion for adoption. Go move. Second. Comment? Roll call, Kevin?
Councilmembers Granville Brady...
Yes.
Tom Mitchell... Fred Weed...
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
All right. Ordinance 2659-22-0118. Amendment chapter 166-46, one Schedule VA Permit Parking at the Borough Code. Moving South Street with said schedule. Motion to open for public. Go move. Second.
Councilmembers Granville Brady...
Yes.
Tom Mitchell... Fred Weed...
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Public hearing on this ordinance. Hearing none, motion to close. Go move. Second.
Councilmembers Granville Brady... Tom Mitchell... Fred Weed... Randy Pitts?
Yes.
All right, motion for adoption. Go move. Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Granville Brady...
Yes.
Tom Mitchell... Fred Weed...
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Okay, last ordinance for hearing, 2660-22-0118. Amendment chapter 80 entitled Fire Prevention, Life Safety, Section 8, entitled Certificate of Smoke Detector, Carbon Monoxide Alarm and Fire Extinction Compliance to Include subsection B4 on the inspection page. Motion for open. Go move. Second.
Councilmembers Granville Brady...
Yes.
Tom Mitchell... Fred Weed...
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Public hearing on this ordinance. Hearing no comment, motion to close. Go move. Second.
Councilmembers Granville Brady... Yes. Tom Mitchell... Fred Weed... Randy Pitts?
Yes.
All right. Motion for adoption. Go move.
Councilmembers, councilmembers Granville Brady...
Yes.
Tom Mitchell... Fred Weed... Randy Pitts?
Yes.
All right, we have one resolution for a pullout of the consent resolutions. Resolution 22-0222-061. Before I call for a motion for a, a motion on that, just to remind it to the public, we had a vacancy on the Borough Council created by the resignation of Councilman Jane Kabuna, which became effective February 1st, I believe, Kevin, was her date?
That's correct.
So that by, by state statute and Borough ordinance, the Democratic Committee had 15 days in which to submit pre-names. Kevin, that was done according to the roll call?
February 14th.
Okay. So everything's in order, then, for this motion to proceed. Jeremy, legally, we've met all the state requirements, statute-wise. All right, so we have a resolution on the floor. I'll call for a motion.
I will move, since we don't have the name in there, I will make a motion to appoint Gina Stravick to the Borough Council vacancy.
Second.
Councilmembers Granville Brady...
Yes.
Tom Mitchell...
Yes.
Fred Weed...
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
I want to thank all three candidates for submitting their qualifications, taking the time to do the interview. Somerville's lucky. We have a great pool of talent out there, good people to choose from. Stravick, congratulations on your appointment. Would you like to be sworn in tonight? Or would you like to be sworn in at a, you know, at a private ceremony at Borough Hall? It's your call.
Today's fine.
Kevin, we have a, I think we do have a...
Right now, it's 10:00.
We could do that.
I just love it.
Kevin?
I hope you've got a book.
We always have a five minutes.
I'd just like to say one thing. The other two candidates were very well qualified, and I hope that they will continue to put their names forward for, not only for council, but for, and all of our volunteer committees that we have on the Borough.
Roll call.
Yeah.
I state your name.
I, Gina Stravick.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the State of New Jersey.
And the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I will faithfully...
And I will faithfully...
Impartially...
Impartially.
And justly perform...
And justly perform.
All the duties of councilwoman...
All the duties of councilwoman.
For the Borough of Somerville.
For the Borough of Somerville.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I'd just like to say thank you for your appointment. Take your seat and you may speak. Take your seat, and then you may speak. Kevin, I will allow you a minute to brief the vote.
Well, just want to thank the Interim Board Council, my fellow now fellow board members for having the faith in me to fulfill this role. I know I feel big shoes, but I also feel quite prepared. My volunteer service in this community for the past thirty-five years has led me in this path, so thank you.
Welcome aboard. All right, I need a motion to open the public session. Go move. Second.
Councilmembers Graham O'Braidy?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yeah.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Thank you.
Public session is open. If you have questions or comments, please address them to myself. Come to the mic, identify your name and address for the public record. Public session is open.
Good evening. Order day, eighty-one Center Street. I was overcome to meet these two weeks ago. When I read the agenda, I was saddened when I saw that Joe Randis is retiring. Joe's been a stalwart of public service, of the Public Works Department for the last forty-one years. He's a guy in the street sweeper. He's just been an asset to this borough. We're going to miss him. I don't want to, my wife said, "I'm becoming the village carola." I'm taking over for Mr. Correllis. I don't want that. Kevin, I want to thank you for all the assistance you gave me and the leadership you gave when I was setting up the community testing at the American Union last opening this month. Your help has always been great, so thank you very much. If you're looking for a place for the vaccinations, I can make the leisure available if you need it. And I also want to thank Patty for playing on the Borough website. Thank you, Patty. We would get the okay on Monday. She would have her Tuesday, or that afternoon for Tuesday.
If Kevin has roadblocks to the firehouse, we'll take you on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Tonight, something I've had on here. The Borough has really done a lousy job in promoting or dispelling a lot of rumors. If you ask eighty to ninety percent of the people in this town, they think that all of the apartments and things that are being built is because you've gone out looking for someone to take over this piece of property. Don Storms is a perfect example. There's a piece of property available, they come, they're going to be vetted, they're going to go to the planning board, but people think that we aren't you the board that's doing it. And it's not. And I've tried to tell some of my neighbors, no, the town is not doing this. Here's a piece of property. Don Storms, Anthony, or Jack, they come in and say, "I've got a piece of property, this is what I'd like to do," and they do it after going through a series of meetings with the planning board and or the zoning board. But everybody thinks that you guys are going out there looking for people. I say, no, with the exception of Kirby Avenue and the developer on the landfill, everybody's come in and said, "I've got a piece of property." And I always tell them, like, my neighbor, everybody knows Big Evans on Southside Avenue, has a nice piece of property. I said, "You can come in and look for an application for a two-family house and get vetted by the zoning board," but it's not that the Borough has gone out and said, "Hey, Mr. Evans, will you put in a two-family house here?" But everybody, the perception is that the council is doing it. But now I know that with Patty on, where you increase it or your social media presence and try and maybe dispel some of these things, things will be perceived differently. So that's a good movement.
I appreciate those comments, Art, because for myself, I have never met, nor will I ever meet, a private developer or a poll up, I don't have either a professional or another council person with me. I've made that clear from the beginning. We don't have to go out begging for the, you know, the business community knows where we are, and the quality of this town speaks for itself. But I appreciate you saying that because, you know, I've heard it, you know, for a long time.
Oh, yeah, I get what you're saying.
And it's just not the way it's done.
Okay, I want to talk about the three Rs, not meaning writing you with my tick. But as my wife and I were coming out of Robson Street the other day, I'm hit right in the face with Rocky's bodega, two or three houses that need some rehab, and Kitty's lingerie. People are now living in six-hundred-thousand-dollar townhouses. And you know, when we first started this project, meeting in the George parking, George waiting room, we're talking about two-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Now they're selling for six-hundred thousand. I don't want to come out of my six-hundred thousand dollar townhouse and look at Rocky's bodega and this. My wife and I were there on Saturday, and I said, "We've got to make some phone calls." I said, "We've got to call Malinowski, our state senator, state senate member, to see if there's any money for rehab, restoration, and rehabilitation of these homes." I don't want to get into the fourth R, which is redevelopment. But if I'm looking in a six-hundred-thousand-dollar house, I don't want to look across there. And Rocky just did some renovation, but these houses new, they need a couple, some paint, they need some, you know, because what is happening is that all of these people coming in, you're taking away the community. I live, and I've said this before, on the other side, I live in the most ethnically and economically diverse portion of this town. There are people in my neighborhood who need every dime and dollar that they can get from the federal government, the state government, they got Section Eight, which is a program that I brought to this town a long time ago, to get housing assistance. And we have people with six-figure incomes and seven-figure portfolios right around the corner. We're going to lose that. If I had asked the council several months ago to take that property, zoning line, on the north side of Second Street and move it, because all of Second Street on the north side is zone business, and they're residential. And these are people, my neighbors, who have owned their homes for thirty, forty, fifty, sixty years. My friend Gus just sold a family home, said that they've owned for the last sixty-five years because he's finally moving. I have neighbors on my block, block fifty-seven, who have been there fifty longer than I have. I bought my house in nineteen seventy. I was the youngest homeowner on the street, not only oldest, as far as longevity, on that house for fifty-one years. My wife wants, everyone wants, says, "We should have bought that house on Nisa Terrace. We should have bought that house on Altima." I said, "Yeah, we could have." I choose to live there because that's where my family is. And like you said, my family's been here since George Washington was president. We're losing our neighborhoods. We're losing our community. And I don't want that spread to go across Bridge Street. So if we could find somebody to help some of the homeowners, as we did back in nineteen seventy-six, when we worked in the Development Block Rants Inn, which helped the individual fix his or her house, not re-renovations, but to fix the house, the structure, to make sure that it was up to code, we will maintain it. When I sit on Election Day and doing the challenging and see the people from Soma and the other district, I bet there's not one of any, of all the apartments that we have built in the last several years, which is over two thousand, that's on board. But in my neighborhood, there are people who volunteer in this town, that hold positions in this town, and I want to maintain it. I don't want us to become that little town up in Hudson County that's a little bit smaller than Somerville, it has fifty-two-thousand people. And every week, mayor is on News Twelve, infrastructure break here, water main break here, sewer line break there. But I also would like to see us maintaining the community that everybody said that Somerville is and wants to be. So if we could find somebody for some restoration, rehabilitation, and renovation, it would do a lot to maintain our community, our community spirit.
Not just in that neighborhood, but in my neighborhood as well. Our houses are getting on almost a hundred years now, too.
Mine's a hundred and eighteen.
Yeah, and everyone could use some rehab, so point well taken.
Okay, the other thing is, you talked about the flashing lights, the stop signs, and the strips. I've been to this council, this is the fourth time, and you've been to my house, and we've gone to the corner of Center and Third, and we've looked at that. Hank Orner was in my house, and we went and looked at it. Mayor, will you put Center and Third on that list?
Thank you, Art.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Frank McAlley, one-twenty-nine Barcon Street. This is a good name. I had a sewer problem about a week ago, and of course sewer problems happen on Fridays, late in the afternoon. So I had my plumber there.
Four sat there Sunday, never during the week.
Yeah, I had my plumber there and couldn't get the thing open. I called the Borough. Rodney Hadley came out, Darren came out, a few other guys, and they worked till ten o'clock at night. Couldn't resolve the problem. So Monday morning, well, Saturday, the next day, I had somebody come out, tried to water jet the problem, couldn't get in. Put a camera on it, and we found that the blockage was in the street. But fortunately, you know, Rodney Hadley had documented everything. The water company had done a lot of work down there. And what had happened? They had crushed my soil. So they had to, on Monday morning, we met with the water company and the contractor, and Rodney, and the water company, not the contractor, they opened up the street and cleared my problem. So I'm very grateful for our Public Works Department, the way they came together on a Friday evening. They were working until ten o'clock at night in the street, laying down in the sewer lines, you know, just with a water jet. So I am very proud to live in this town for that. We've got a nice community.
Thank you for that.
Now, next thing. Do we have, or are you going to work on a long-range plan, like a five-year plan, for Somerville? Are we going to be in Borough Hall for five more years, or are we going to look elsewhere? Are we going to move Public Works? These are things that, I'm just posing the question, because if we don't address it and start addressing it, it's going to, all of a sudden, it's going to happen, and we won't be prepared for it. So that's...
I would just say, we're looking at all of our facilities in terms of upgrading and or moving elsewhere, but not, no decisions have been made.
No, I don't expect decisions, but you've got plans.
We understand that we have facilities that are aging, and we need to make a decision if we're going to stay. We need to put resources into making those buildings, you know, feasible long-term, and if not, what are our options?
I am very happy that Police Department and the Fire Department will be moving to Gaston Avenue, the new complex, and Colin Driver was very key and instrumental in getting us this far. It's been a long haul, but I can hopefully see the light at the end of the tunnel.
Well, all things, all goes well, and we'll break ground by the end of this year on that, so we...
One last question, and I, this is a little iffy. When is Borough Hall going to open to the public, or do I have to stand out on the sidewalk and help the people?
I can't answer that. Kevin, can you give us some direction?
Well, who makes the date? What happens is decided.
We're discussing internally.
Who is we, if I may ask?
Management staff.
Who is management at the top? Because this is unclear to me as to who, if something happened to our Borough Administrator, like he decided to take it on a job, or he got sick someday, who's in charge?
We have the continuity plan. We need all the time on our front.
But I, I don't, does the council...
We share information. We're a small organization. We've had many people lead over the organization over the past four years. We've been able to fill them in, either through the use of consultants or through the use of a transition plan. It has not posed an issue. As far as I know, I'm not going anywhere.
No, no, but I mean, just suppose you got to say, "Look, I've been..."
Paige Elster is a CFO, she's more than competent to fill in the central roles of that office. It would be a combined effort until the municipality, we were able to work out whatever we used to work out to replace a position.
I'm very concerned about the...
We do have, we do have a lot of people with a lot of talents and a lot of crossover certifications, which makes it nice. That's been something the Borough's been promoting for ten years. So a lot of us are licensed in the same area. So, you know, in areas that I'm licensed in, Rodney Hadley's also licensed there. On the QPA right now, Paige Elster's in school for that. So there is a lot of crossover with a lot of licenses. I'm pretty confident that, you know, provided that we're all not on the same bus at the same time.
No, I don't...
Yeah, forbid that our continuity will be fine. And I think the Borough, you know, knows, I think that the microficheers know very well enough that unless something disastrous happened, the reality is, we have a continuity of staff that would cross over and do all of our, so I'm fairly confident, in fact.
One last comment. The morale of our employees. I speak to a lot of people. I've been around a long time, and some of them are very disheartened with some of the things that go on. I just ask you to take a good look at our personnel issues and how they're handled. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. What else? Hearing none, motion to close public. Go move. Second.
Councilmembers Graham O'Braidy?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell? Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Okay, public session is closed. We have several consent resolutions. Are there any that council wants to pull? All right. First one, oh sixty-two, authorizing a refund on the remaining escrow balance, Brick St. Pierre, eighteen East Main Street, seven-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. Oh sixty-three, approving a Macalot five-k road race on Saturday, June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two at eight-thirty a.m., contingent on OEM and PD approvals. And then, we have to do roll call on those. And then one more, accepting the resignation of John Chakowski in the business date, March fourth, twenty-twenty-two. Can I have a motion on those two? Go move. Second.
Councilmembers Graham O'Braidy?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell? Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
All right, we already took care of oh sixty-four, designating DGM Properties as a designated developer. Last one is oh sixty-five, adopting the twenty-twenty-two downtown Somerville Alliance budget, an amount of eight-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-eight dollars. Motion on that one.
Oh sixty-four.
Oh sixty-five.
Oh sixty-five.
Oh sixty-five, I'm sorry. Okay, so I need a motion on that one. Go move. Second.
Councilmembers Graham O'Braidy?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell? Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
All right, Councilman Weed, you've got bills and vouchers.
I move to pay the remit of nine million, three-hundred-and-fifty thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty dollars, eighty-one cents in bills and vouchers.
I second that.
Councilman Stravic, just for information, each department has a voucher packet that'll be available Friday before council meeting. And councilman Weed can go over the middle process. This is it, I believe. Yeah. Okay? All right.
If you're uncomfortable, I'm not asking.
All right, roll call on that.
Councilmembers Graham O'Braidy?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell? Gina Stravic?
Upstate.
Thank you. Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
All right, we're at our adjournment point. Mr. Mitchell, I'll defer to you.
Go further in the...
Second. All favor. See you on March seventh. Meeting adjourned.